I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, February 6, 2025 to order. Will the clerk be the word?
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pochek.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying let's just be it. We now move to petition and communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and village board will be Saturday, March 1st at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302 or contact your local district trustee. Register today for the village's e-newsletter. On the first Monday of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead with news from the village of Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighes.org. If you have any questions, please contact the village's public relations division at[139.96][140.00](630) 909-5350. Thank you.
Trustee Siddiqui. The Glendale Heights Police Department aims to be cool for annual polar plunge. Support our officers in the polar plunge as they raise funds for Special Olympic Illinois. In order to donate, please visit the village website at glendalehighes.org. Officer Kirk and Shehan are both participating in the super plunge while 15 other officers are completing one-time plunges. If you have any question or if you would like to make a donation, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number (630) 260-6070. Get ready to embark on a colorful journey with a real-life sock. On Sunday, February 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we will be painting portraits of real-life socks at Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens. This program is perfect for ages 3 and up with an adult. No prayer, painting, or crafting experience is necessary, and an instructor will work with you to bring your painting to life. The fee for this program is $65 for residents and $75 for non-residents. Don't miss out this unique experience. For more information or to register, please contact at Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. Spring is right around the corner, so register by Sunday, March 9th for spring outdoor soccer. The regular season runs from April 12th through June 7th with five different grade levels. Register by February 19th for early bird reduced rate. For more information or to register for spring outdoor soccer, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Hey, better, better. Register by Tuesday, March 4th for Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball. We're offering six different leagues, ranging from my first T-ball to pony leagues. Practice begins early April, well, it is early, early April as weather allows. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Clerk Schmidt.
The Glendale Heights Police Department and the village of Glendale Heights wants you to always remember, if you see something, say something. Although they do their best to be out in the community, they can't be everywhere at once. This is why they rely on you, the residents of the village of Glendale Heights, to let them know what is happening. If you ever see something that is suspicious, please do not hesitate to call 911 and let an officer investigate the matter. If you have any questions, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Trustee Maritato.
Register today for the Mother-Son Dance. Be ready to have the time of your life at our winter wonderland themed dance. Enjoy the tivity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February 21st from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Dance the night away at the annual Daddy-Daughter Dance on Saturday, February 22nd from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. We will be celebrating a winter wonderland for this year's theme. The evening will include dancing, dinner, and every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, call the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Pochek.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more, and there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070.
Trustee Schroder.
Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizens Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. You must be age 65 or better on or before December 1st, 2024, or have a spouse who is age 65. You have to have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2024 as either an owner or a renter. You have to have earned no more than $45,000 gross income during 2024, and you must have utilities billed and paid for in your name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 or the Finance Department at (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. Next, a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as American Heart Month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Punjabi Language Month. Next, a proclamation to proclaim the week of February 9th to February 15th, 2025 as National Salute to Veterans Patient. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations, which I have signed. Number next is mine. Happy Valentine's Day, written by a student. It says, "Thank you for serving our country. I hope you receive lots of love this Valentine's Day. You are greatly appreciated."
Mayor, we have a presentation.
Then we have presentation, you know, for Jessica.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello and good evening, everyone. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Jessica Marsage, and I am a recreation supervisor for the Leisure Services Department. In this role, I have the privilege of organizing many community events and programs that bring our residents together in meaningful ways. As the mayor and the village board have proclaimed, February 9th through 15th is National Salute to Veteran Patients Week in Glendale Heights. This is a time to honor and express our gratitude to the men and women who have served our country. One of the ways our community shows their appreciation is through our Valentine's to Veterans program. This initiative, which began over 20 years ago, has grown into a beloved tradition in our community. Schools, nonprofit organizations, and individual residents have all come together year after year to create heartfelt Valentines. Every card is made with creativity and care, each carrying a simple but powerful message to our veterans. You are valued, you are appreciated, you are remembered. I want to take this opportunity to thank the individuals and organizations who participated in the program this year, including, but not limited to Markwood School District 15, Queen Bee School District 16, Glenbard District 87, Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights, Glendale Heights Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts, Glendale Heights Sports Hub Preschool, Glendale Heights Sports Hub Path Program, and the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens. We have already collected hundreds of Valentines and more continue to arrive. All of the cards will be sent to Illinois Veteran Homes and Veteran Hospitals. One special card that I would like to share with everyone is this giant card from Glen Bard North. In addition to making many of the cards that everyone sees before them, they created one large Valentine where all of the students who participated in the program each signed. So it says, "Happy Valentine's Day, thank you for your service," and then all of the signatures. Every card that we receive, no matter the size, will serve as a heartfelt reminder to our veterans that they are appreciated. Thank you again to everyone who dropped off their Valentines. As the mayor has already started, I have dropped off a couple of cards for everyone in the board to read. Would you, Marie, would you like to start us off?
Okay. This is pictures of cats, and it says, "Will you be my Meow-antein?" And, "Why don't cats play poker in the jungle? Too many cheetahs." And I hope you have a perfect Valentine's Day. Happy Valentine's Day, era.
I have a card here, says Happy Valentine's Day, no picture, but on the inside, "Happy Valentine's Day. I sincerely thank you for your dedication to our country, your sacrifice in the face of great danger, and the bravery that you showed will echo in the generations to come. Thank you for your bravery during the war. Without your courageous acts, we may not be here today. Thank you for everything, heart, you did to save our lives." From Sophia. Thank you.
I have a simple card with a very strong message. It's, "Happy Valentine's Day, dear veteran. On this special day, we take a moment to honor you, not just for your service, but for your strength, resilience, and unwavering commitment. Your sacrifices have shaped the freedom we hold, dear, and your courage inspires us all. Wishing you a day filled with love, peace, and gratitude." And there is no name. I wish I should know the name of that. It's a very nice message. Thank you.
All right, mine is completely opposite of Marie's. Mine has dogs on it. On the very front, it says, "Pugs and Kisses." So I thought that was kind of neat. You are positively fetching, and I totally wolf you. "Happy Valentine's Day," from Nellie, but she did put in a nice joke also. "Why did the pooch sit in the shade? He was a hot dog." Thank you, Nellie. That was a fantastic card.
I have mine next. Good one.
Says, "Happy Valentine's Day" on it. "Thank you for your service to veterans. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for being a hero in our nation. You inspire many of us to do more good. You will never go unrecognized. Happy Valentine's Day." And there's no name to it.
"Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for serving our country. I hope you receive lots of love this Valentine's Day. Forever grateful for your service." No name.
Mine is very short also. It says, "Words cannot describe how grateful I am for the security and safety you have provided for the nation. People and me thank you." And signed, a student.
Thank you to everyone for reading just a few of the cards that we received for this program, and thank you for the opportunity to showcase this wonderful program to the community.
You are not done. We have other one, you know. Again, Ms. Jessica.
Thank you. Hi again. My name is still Jessica, and I am also here to present the results of the Holiday in the Heights House Decorating Contest that took place this winter. This program was created to showcase the creativity of our residents during the holiday season. This brief program invited Glendale Heights residents to register and submit photos of their decorated homes before December 21st. The community was then able to vote on their favorite homes and determine the most festive house in Glendale Heights. We are pleased to report that 16 households participated in the contest and over 250 people voted. I now want to take this opportunity to showcase the top three winners as determined by those voters. And if any of the winners are here tonight, I ask that you stand up and be recognized by the community. The third-place winner is the Brighton-the-Night House, submitted by the Ventura family. They received 20 votes. The second-place winner is the Forever Christmas Joy House, submitted by the Munoz family. They received 41 votes. And the first-place winner, receiving 58 votes, is the Candy Cane Christmas House, submitted by the Forrest family. I want you to know, many people assumed that it was professionally decorated. I also want to do a special thank you to our event sponsors, Culvers, Village Tavern, and El Famous Burrito for generously donating the prizes for our winners. And before I finish my second presentation, I would like to thank the other committee members who worked with me to put together this project, Luisa Berardi and Chris Dwaske. Without their collaboration, this would not have been possible. We plan to continue these house decorating contests later in the year, and I look forward to seeing the continued creativity of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this contest and highlight our winners. That is my last presentation, and thank you all for having me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Next, is public discussion. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting on agenda items only? Anyone from public? None? You have the concert agenda before you work, Epping. Village Administrator, do you please read the concert agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2025. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2025. Three, approval of the council payable listing of February 6, 2025, the amount of Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing professional design engineering services for the North Avenue Sewer Condition Assessment Project. Five, resolution of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois adopting second quarter fiscal year 2024/2025 budget amendments. Six, resolution authorizing the execution of electric utility service agreement. Seven, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final, for the wastewater treatment plant, influent pump station, structural repairs, and maintenance improvements project. Eight, approval of prayer request number one, final, for the wastewater treatment plant, influent pump structure, pump station, structural repairs, and maintenance improvements project in total not to exceed $61,350. Nine is approval of consent.
Is there motion to move the concert agenda? Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Light, second.
Roll call word, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
The concert agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, number one, a resolution appointing a resident member and removing a resident member of the historical house committee of the village of Glendale Heights. Again, I, this is resolution 2025-R-16. Is there motion to adopt resolution 2025-R-16? Light.
So moved. Second.
Siddiqui, second. Discussion. None. Roll call word, please.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2025-R-16 is approved. Public discussion of agenda item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting on agenda item only? Anyone from public? None. Exатель session, there's none. Any motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Roll call word, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Siddiqui, you have the authority of the hall.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, February 6, 2025 to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Okay, does anyone have any additions or deletions? Okay, Mr. Light.
Future.
Future. Okay. Okay, Mr. Pochek.
Statement.
Anyone else? Okay, I have one. Ice indoors, ice enforcement. Okay. All right, so committee reports. Glendale League's Golf Club Committee.
No reports.
Historical Committee.
You bet I do. We have had and talked about, we've had several meetings, and in these meetings, we have discussed changes that we want to see for the historical house. I've reached out to the community, as everyone knows, during each meeting, asking for donations and things that we could bring forward to add to the historical house. I got a phone call one day, and a resident wanted to donate a spinning wheel for which, you know, for me, I'm thinking spin class or something like that. Apparently, it goes back much older than that. So I went over to her house, where she presented me with this particular spinning wheel here. Apparently, it's from the late 1800s. She was going to give me a demonstration on how it operates, but I really didn't have the time for that, because it takes quite a bit of time to make the product that it does do. I was really impressed with the amount of enthusiasm that I received from the family, and I wanted to say thank you to the family, Nancy Wertz, who donated the wheel, and the extra special gift that we got from it was her daughter Sydney, who we just put on the historic committee. She's got background history with museums and curating and such like that, and I thought, what a young, energetic person, very educated, and has a great background with history. And I thought, what a perfect fit. So we put her on there tonight, and she promised me she was going to, she said, demonstrate this at one of the open house.
I'd really like to see how this thing works.
I'm just saying, I think it'll be fun, but I just.
Maybe do it at your historical house, maybe.
Yeah, for an open house. We can, we can put you behind it, and she'll show you how to do it. I think that would work out.
I'd love to see.
This is what I'm looking for, some antique, I don't need the pots and pans that you had when you were in the, you know, 1970s. Granted, those are much appreciated, but we don't need stuff like that. This is kind of what we're looking for, historically correct, something that was part of our history, and it will help bring our history to life. So remember to visit the historic house, and we look forward to the donations. I heard something of maybe a baseball uniform from the very first teams that we had here, possibly coming, and some neat ideas. So please, keep it coming forward, and I thank everybody, and come out to the historical house. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Audience Committee. Mary? Mary, do you have anything for audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was so impressed with that.
Mesperity.
I used to have one. No, not. Anyway, no. No report from the audience committee. I'm sorry.
Parks and Recreation Committee.
No reports.
Okay. Property Enhancement Committee.
Yes, we had a meeting on the 27th of January, a managers' and landlords' meeting. Mr. Byallis again went over the license renewal requests and requirements, and especially online application, and did a very thorough job on that. Thank you, Tom.
Good. Okay. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
Do you know what? There is always so much going on at the senior center. I couldn't begin to tell all of you everything that's going on. I'm just going to highlight a few things, and one of the things I want to highlight is, you know, with Valentine's Day coming up, they've got a beautiful Valentine's Day luncheon planned for, for the seniors. Then St. Patrick's Day is next month in March. Again, there's another nice lunch. Last year, I don't know what they're doing this year, but last year, Tony's Grocery made corned beef and cabbage for us. It was excellent. So those of you who are seniors and are sitting home, you're really missing the boat. Get yourselves out there. You're going to have a wonderful time. That's all I'd like to report.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on committee recommendations only? No? Okay. Okay. Committee recommendations. Planning and Zoning Commission. Our recommendation to approve an application for a variance from Title 11, Chapter 4, Section 11-4-6D to allow the construction of a six-foot privacy fence to the property line in the corner side lot located at 1924 President Street. Is there a motion to move this to the board with a recommendation to conquer? Mr. Meritato.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Coker. Okay, discussion. Roll call word, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pochek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Okay, so motion is adopted. Planning and Zoning Commission. Our recommendation to deny an application for a conditional use permit under Chapter 11, Article D, I, Light Industrial District, Section 11, 11D3, conditional uses to allow a, off-street parking of trucks and trailers, b, outdoor storage associated with any permitted or conditional use in the district located at 101 Regency Drive. Is there a motion to deny this application?
Trustee Siddiqui, the petitioner has formally withdrawn their request.
Okay.
They provided a written withdrawal of their request.
Okay, so we don't need.
There's no action.
Okay, no action. Okay. Right, number three. Planning and zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission. Our recommendation to approve an application initiated by the Village of Glendale Heights for rezoning property located at 44 East North Avenue Arts RV, identified by PIN number 0 through 36302005 from AE Agriculture State District to C3 General Commercial District. Is there a motion to move this to the board with the recommendation to conquer? Mr. Schmidt? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Coker, second, okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sadeke?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Okay, so motion is adopted. Uh, okay, so now, Mr. Light.
My turn?
Yes, future.
Future, okay. This comes to me after really reflecting upon how things have been going lately. Lately, it seems like respect. The foundation for any strong community is being tested. Whether, whether in public meetings, neighborhood discussions, or municipal collaborations, tensions can run high. Disagreements can overshadow the values that bring us together. As a community leader, I have seen firsthand how the lack of respect can erode trust, stall progress, and divide people who ultimately share the same goal, a thriving, united community. But here's the good news. Respect is not gone. It just needs a little jump start. It really does. By fostering open dialogue, leading by example, and finding common ground, we can shift the conversation back towards positivity and progress. It starts with each of us choosing to listen, engage with kindness, and remember that behind every title, role, or opinion is a person who needs to be heard. Restoring respect and trust does not happen overnight. But it is possible when, when we commit to intentional uplifting leadership by leading with integrity, listening with empathy, and fostering unity. We can create a stronger, more respectful community, one which trust is not just regained, but reinforced for our future. So I ask everybody to join me in this effort, and let's strive to be a little bit more respectful.
Thank you. Mr. Pochek?
Okay, here. Residents, I want to set the record straight regarding Andrade's statement saying that I said a slanderous comment referring to one's nationality. Residents, I never made this comment. And I repeat, I never made this comment. And I'm sorry to think that he feels that way. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, you did, you know, you did in front of me, you did in front of a lot of people.
We are done with this.
And this is not the first time you did a year ago as well, you know.
Mr. Coker? Yes, Mary.
No, there is one answer he required, you know. You cannot lie, you know, before the whole meeting.
Only talk when you are supposed to. Yes, Mary, go ahead.
I just want to say something in a positive vein because we need positiveness in here. All right, do you know what? In District 6 on Cove Lane, I don't know who initiated this, but someone had a street light put in. The residents did call me, thanked me for it. I did not take credit for it because it was not my idea. I don't know whose idea it was, but I want you to know that it was well taken. The residents loved it, and I don't know how to go about doing this if somebody else should ever want a street light in because they love it, love it, love it. And I wanted you to know about it.
You have to ask.
Pardon?
Just ask.
All right, just ask. Oh, all right, thank you.
Easy, huh?
You're gonna get a lot of requests now.
You get them all. We just got one last week.
Can I ask who did?
I mean, nobody knows where the dead spots are better than the residents. And if the residents, you know, feel the need, there's a light, and we do a study, then we put a light.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Don't thank me.
It was well taken.
Public Works. Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works.
Good job.
All right.
Okay. Yes, now it's mine. ICE enforcement. So recently now, I just want to bring up a important issue because I have received some calls, and there is a kind of some, some confusion about our police department's action and what's going on with the ICE. So a lot of residents saying that, you know, what is the ICE boundaries? Or do our police also check the immigration status? Or do they also go out and search? So I thought maybe I will bring this up and if Chief Purpose.
Want me to answer, George? You want to answer?
I got it.
Yeah.
So the Illinois law enforcement officers are covered by what is called the Trust Act. The Trust Act says that no officer that is an officer in Illinois can detain somebody based on their immigration status or a retainer from the immigration, federal immigration office. The retainer, just so you guys all know, is a civil order. Now, what's different is if a judge issues a federal warrant, then somebody can be detained by that. Again, that is something that is signed by a judge. Otherwise, we cannot do it. And for us, we also have to report the information that we have in conjunction with any immigration to the Attorney General's office. So the Trust Act or the rules that we have to follow, and then we also have to turn that information in annually. So it's covered a lot. The other question that often comes up, this was brought up at the coffee on Saturday as well. For schools, there's a lot of concern about schools. Well, there is a Supreme Court Act, and it's Plyer versus Doe. It's a 1982 Supreme Court case. And what that says is that every child, no matter what their immigration status is, has a right to have a public education. That is a Fourteenth Amendment equal protection clause. So in order for somebody to not be allowed to have an education, there has to show furtherance of some substantial state interest. So what I'm telling you is, I know there's a lot of stuff going on right now, but schools are a safe place for kids. It is covered by United States Supreme Court, the highest court in the land.
Okay, thank you, Chief Purpose. Okay, public comment. Is there anyone in the public would like to address this vote?
Kelly Lambert, 1630 acre burial of Glendale Heights. Just ask. We did ask, and we got our lights put up on our stop signs. And quite quickly, and I'd just like to say is, I'm the new Gladys Krabbitts, so I've been checking the neighborhood, and it seems to be working at least seventy percent now or stopping or doing a real slow roll-through. But it seems to be working really good as far as the light on the stop signs. Thank you very much to the village for such quick action on that.
Thank you.
Kim Darlin Greenbrier. Keith, this one's for you, sorry. Keith, what's going on with the community garden?
Uh, the community garden, we've been renting plots. We have, I believe as of tonight, seven of the twenty-four plots already rented. We're planning on opening it up around April, weather dependent.
So it is gonna open?
This time, it's gonna open. Yes, it's going to open.
Is it gonna have water?
Uh, there will be a pump that is going to be put in place. We're just waiting for them to do it. We finally got approval on that late December. So there will be a water pump that'll be available. We also have four ADA plots that'll be put on the cement pad that's out there. There'll be a shed. There will be porta potty. There will be a compost bin. So it will be a community garden, just like we said we would have. It just took us a little bit.
Nice job. Thank you.
So Keith, how we are renting? Are we like doing a?
And you just, you go through the sports hub. So it's a registration. You can actually even register online. Registration in the brochure said that it started on the first, and non-residents can't rent until the eighth. So we have time still, and we have twenty-four spots that are available. As I said, I think seven have already been rented as of today.
Okay, seventeen that are available.
Seventeen available, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Epstein Club Drive. I want to thank the Public Works Department for coming out after Saturday's meeting with regards to the flooding on the street. They did come out and check for it, and we're going to get back with the flooding issues that were occurring, creating ice ponds on the street. We did have some new streets basically built up in there. And I also had a discussion with Dr. Williams, District 16, and with regards to ICE, and his suggestion also. His constituency is for his children not to discuss anything with regards to the immigration status with anybody because you never know who might be on that other end that will report their families to ICE or anything like that. We have some people that may just be acting in not in the best interests of the students. They are, the schools are there to protect them, and that's the way they want to keep it. So in conversation with Dr. Williams, he said they are very pro-students. They don't even have records of the immigration status of any of the students within the schools, at least in District 16, and he wants to keep them safe from any ICE invasions. So, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. Oh, you wanna? Okay, come on in.
Well, actually, it's closed, you know, session is closed, you know.
No, I am around.
I put first motion to move, you know, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
We need second.
I am the chairman, go ahead.
You have to talk with the attorney. Not you can do this.
Mayor, thank you. You know, I just want to say, excuse me, please, excuse me. God bless you. God bless you, but excuse me.
These are idiot people. They don't know law. They don't know Constitution.
No, unfortunately, neither, I am sorry. It is my turn.
Listen, we have a attorney over here. He can decide. He can do this or not.
I have a constitutional question.
No, this is not Constitution.
Mayor, do you know, do you know who rules the country?
Is there, is there anybody on the board who objects to?
Can, can you answer a question? Do you know who rules? It is not government.
Tika, go ahead.
I am the chairman, and I am allowing you.
There was no, there was no second.
Please, start all over again. We didn't hear a word you said.
Oh, right, that's a problem I heard.
Thank you.
I should speak more clearly. I am Artika, counselor resident for a long time. And at the last meeting, I praised a few people, leaders in this town. And when I left, I thought, wow, I left so many people out. You know, I realized that there's so many who serve so sacrificially, so among the support, not just the board and others, and you know, so, and of the town, really, I thought, you know, my God, you know, who really should be leading our village? You know? Any ideas? Mayor? We, the people. I just want to read one line from the, isn't this a lovely, thin book? That's what attracted me to it at first, so thin, you know. But one line, "We, the people of the United States," uh-oh, I tore it. "In a more," uh-oh. "In order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." It really should be taught in all the schools, don't you think? Really, truly. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? One, two, three, okay, now. All right, now is there a motion to adjourn? Chester.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Roll call word?
Roll call.
All eye?
You can do a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.